He gave you the thumbs up.
We're good? Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. Could we have a roll please?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Goldberg.
Here.
Trustee Gould.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Here.
Trustee Rosner.
Yeah.
President Torpe.
Here.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this special meeting had been provided to the press on November 27th in accordance with the Public Meetings Act. In addition, notice of the special meeting was posted in Village Hall and on our Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. The purpose of this meeting will be to hold a presentation and discussion of the completed ICMA Policing Best Practices Study and Report. Official action will not be taken at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, in the Israel of liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, as our Village Clerk said, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to have a presentation from ICMA and a discussion with them about the ICMA Policing Best Practices Study. I do want to make sure to make clear to all of the Board members and audience members and members of the public that this meeting is specifically held for the purpose of justice presentation and the discussion of the report itself, not for a full discussion about the issues that are actually contained in the report, which is something the Board's going to have to consider. But for the sake of getting through this entire report and ensuring that all the questions are answered by all the Board members and all the issues with the report that might exist could be resolved tonight, that's really the purpose of tonight's meeting. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to you guys.
Okay, or me.
Yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Jim McCabe. As the slide says, I'm from ICMA. I also am an Associate Professor of Criminal Justice at Sacred Heart University in Fairfield, Connecticut. And by way of also other background, I'm retired, a member of the NYPD. I did 20 years, retired into the rank of Inspector, had numerous command level assignments including the Police Academy, the 110th, 113th Precincts, Police Commissioner's Office, the Office of Deputy Commissioner of Training and Labor Relations. I have about 20 slides. It should take about 30 to 45 minutes-ish. I welcome questions as I go along. If there's something that you see that strikes you in either my presentation or in the document, I don't mind taking questions. Actually, I prefer a Q&amp;A. Or I can just run right through it and take questions at the end. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, probably best if you want to run through everything and then I'm sure we'll all have questions at the end.
And if you could provide the copy of the presentation to the Administrator?
Yes, it's on the...
Oh, okay. If you could email it to all of us as well so we have a copy?
Yeah, I'll get it up here.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll wait for that because the font can be a little small up there that we have in front here on the screen.
Well, not everyone does.
Oh, okay. You good to go?
We're good.
Oh, yeah, you multitask.
Okay. Okay, methodology. ICMA has a fairly standard practice, standard methodology when we approach a police department to do best practices as you refer to it or an operational review. The first step is to extract data from the CAD system. This we translate from the calls, from the roll calls into workload. And lay on top of that, as a couple of the graphs will show in a few minutes, we lay on top of that de-staffing and you get a sense of what the demand is for services in the community. We also rely on extensive interviews from the chief on down. We ride along in radio cars. We speak to detectives. We conduct focus groups with officers of various ranks and we do an exhaustive document review. Recommendations in the report, they are listed in the executive summary, dozens of recommendations that we provide. They're also elaborated on later on in the report. In general, they fall in three major categories: staffing and deployment, efficiency, and performance management. The combination of them all can be taken separately or in combination would result in a leaner department with less specialization, with core services enhanced, more focused, and more results driven. In general, for staffing and deployment, we ask three principal questions. What activities do or should the officers be performing? How many officers are necessary to conduct those activities? And then what's the best combination or combinations of how to deploy those officers to maximize their effort? This chart's a little small. I apologize for the font. But these are the 13 categories, 13 or so categories of 9/11 calls that we extract from your CAD system, alphabetical from accidents all the way down to traffic enforcement. The total there, that's total. So 12,433 calls in the 12-month period that we examined, with the percentages on the right-hand column. As you can see, a quarter of all the 9/11, all the calls in the community generated from traffic enforcement down here on the bottom. And then you can see the next major category is check slash investigation. It could be a number of different things. Either a resident is calling because they see a suspicious person or suspicious vehicle or the officers themselves are initiating activities based upon their observations. The next major category here is alarms and so on and so forth. You can see we list them as percentages there. Looking at these general categories, I see areas where you could eliminate almost entire categories of calls if you decided. So for example, the top category of accidents. Around the nation, property damage-only accidents are just essentially being removed from the patrol responsibility. But if it's just a minor accident, motorists are expected to exchange information and they go on their way. Now, if there is an injury or the vehicle is inoperable or blocking the roadway, excuse me, response of the officer is required. But still in all, there are 650-some odd calls, probably 80% of them or so are merely just an exchange of information required. Alarm calls, the next category. I'm not going to go through all of these, but the two big ones, alarm categories, 17.5% of all the calls that the South Orange Officers go on are alarm calls. But we know from experience that 98% of these calls are false. They're either accidental, the CAD tripped the alarm, or the wind blew the alarm, or the homeowner went in and forgot to activate the code. But we know that when you send two officers to 98% of these calls, they're going to be false. So herein lies an opportunity for the department, for the community, to eliminate some of these categories of calls or force, say, homeowners to be a little more vigilant, a little more aggressive with their alarm response and their burglar alarms. I don't mean to imply that you just stop going to alarms, but there are ways of addressing these issues that might make the patrol response more efficient, more effective. For example, medical calls, where you have 737 medical calls. Oftentimes, the police are not required to be there. They're just kind of observers of the ambulance transport. Other times, they are very much needed because they are able to provide CPR or mouth-to-mouth resuscitation or drive somebody to the hospital very quickly. So I don't mean to say that we just start lopping off areas of calls. However, there's enormous opportunities here where you can start maybe to triage these calls for service and minimize the response by the officers. So one of the principal recommendations is to create a committee to explore these opportunities. Three of the major calls, call categories there, the alarms, the accidents, the medical calls, might have room for elimination from the officer's responsibility. I don't think this is the chief's responsibility and I don't think it's necessarily the Board's responsibility or anyone in the communities alone. But it's a collaboration to see, well, maybe this is something that we can work together to stop going to this or maybe be more aggressive in going to that and so on. Another item of note from the CAD data is that you have excellent response and service times. The response time for calls is less than five minutes per call, which is outstanding. So when you call 9/11 in this community, you get an excellent response. The second category here, the service time, we look for a, if you multiply this, the number of minutes on average that South Orange Police spend on a call times the number of officers that they send to that call, we look for this number to be somewhere less than 60. So you're doing it in 30.8, so 31 minutes times officers, which is an excellent response and service that's being given by the officers here. So with that in mind, we can take a look at the current shift schedule and deployment. The South Orange PD relies on three shifts with 10-hour and 40-minute tour lengths. As you can see here, I just have the ranks, the lieutenant, sergeant, officers. This is the deployment as of June when we were here. If these have changed, I'm not sure if these have changed, so if you get that information. But as of June, these were the staffing figures. So you result with six lieutenants, six sergeants, and 27 officers. This is an odd length of tour, 10 hours and 40 minutes. There's multiple combinations of tours in policing around the nation. 10 hours and 40 minutes is the first time I've ever seen this length of tour. You see 10 and a half, you see a lot of 10s. 12 is very common, 8 hours is common. But this length of tour is unusual. And if you can see the hours, the way that's lined up, between the day and the evening shift, you have a four-hour, I believe it's a four-hour and 20-minute overlap between the day and the night shift. In the morning, there's an hour and 10 minute. Between the night and the evening shift, there's a two-hour and 10-minute overlap. It's an unusual place to put the overlaps, except in the evening, in the early evening hours, there's double the amount of officers. You can handle school crossings and extra traffic accidents and traffic volume due to the rush hour. But other than that, one of our principal recommendations is to take a very hard look at this deployment, to see if there's a way to restructure the shift schedules. You could use less officers and you could get more bang for your buck. I understand that you just can unilaterally change shift lengths and tour arrangements, but this is something certainly that is worth a very hard look with the department and with the union, to see if there's a way to make this more efficient and to get a better deployment scheme. What this is continuing with taking the data out of the CAD system, the green, the light green and the dark green areas here, shaded areas, are the patrol and the added patrol staffing, the staffing figures for the main workload and deployment for weekdays and winter. We take one month, I believe it's February, and we take one month and we go to the roll calls, the staffing levels, and literally calculate how many officers are working every hour of the day for the 30 days. So you can see here that at midnight on the average day, there's slightly over four officers, four and a half officers working. And then that spikes. And this is the first overlap between the day and the night shift. And the, I'm not sure what color green that is, a darker green, that's what would represent the Traffic Bureau officers coming to work. And then here again is the four-hour overlap between the day and the evening shift and then when the day shift goes home. And then here's the overlap between the night and the evening shift. The bottom figures, the bottom areas, are the work, the workload demands that come through the 9/11, come through the CAD system. So the blue area is the calls for service from the public. The red area is the calls for service that are initiated by the officers themselves. This is gray. I'm not sure if it comes up gray there. But that's out-of-service time either for meal, for personal, if the car is mechanical, paperwork, whatever the case may be, where the officers are not on patrol. And then the orange is directed patrol work on top of that. Could be any number of reasons why the officers are directed to do something specified by the department. So what we look at, this next graph, translates, if you're following, it translates this work, this staffing level, what is this staffing level, or let me rephrase that, what is this workload as a percentage of that staffing level? And that's what this graph represents. What we like to see, and again, this number 60 for some reason has a meaningful place in the police literature, 60% is considered the threshold that you do not want to have the officers working more than 60% of their time on average. In the case of winter weekdays in South Orange, you can see that the workload is, it really, it peaks only here at about 6:15, 6:30 at night, just over 30%, probably about 35, 36%. With the, there's a chart later on that shows the average on the weekdays in the winter is about 17, 18% on average. And again, the total workload is the black line. The blue line down here is the calls for service that are received directly from the public. So you can see between 2:00 and 5:00 in the morning, in an average in February, there's almost no 9/11 calls, no calls for service coming from the public. And that spikes a little bit here in the dinner hour and then again around 8:00 at night, 9:00 at night. This indicates, at least in this particular month, there is ample. All of this between here, between the top line and the red line, is what we would consider surplus resources on patrol. This is the main workload on the weekends in the summer. So just to put two months up here for the purposes of discussion, the weekdays in the winter, slow. The weekends in the summer, busier. Also in the report, there were two other ones where we look at the weekends in the winter and we look at the weekdays in the summer, just to give you a comparison. But you can see here again, now the Traffic Bureau is off on the weekends, so there's no added patrol here. So this is just the patrol squads represented. And you can see the demand from the public, plus the administrative and the directed patrol and the police-initiated work. Converting this into a percentage, you can see again, there's more than ample. All of this area here underneath the red dot dash line, we would consider surplus resources. Peaks again in the late afternoon hours around 7, 8:00 at night. And then early in the morning hours, 6, 7:00 in the morning on the weekends in the summer, there's essentially no workload experienced.
Can I just ask, what do you define as the times for the weekend? Does that start Friday evening?
Yes, it starts Friday evening at 6:00 PM to Sunday evening at 6:00 PM. There it is. Okay, so putting these, two of the graphs are up there. For brevity purposes, we're comparing the winter and the summer, weekends and weekdays. The average deployment in South Orange in the weekdays in the winter is 7.1, the weekends in the winter it's 5.5, 6.1 on the weekdays in the summer, and 5.6 on the weekends in the summer. The average workload, this means that how many officers are required to deal with all of the work generated either through 9/11 calls, through self-initiated calls, through directed patrol or out-of-service. And you can see here that at the height of the weekdays in the winter, South Orange needs 1.2 officers per hour, on the average hour, to handle the workload. Now, that obviously increases in the late afternoon and it goes next to zero in the early morning hours. Calculated as a percentage, you see there's 17, 18, 18, and 16%. This figure, if it was at 60, it would be overwhelming for the patrol staff. At 17, 18%, there is more than ample resources on patrol to handle the workload. In fact, the maximum never exceeds 60% any given one of these time periods. So what does this mean? Well, it means you only need one officer working essentially on average during a given 24-hour period to handle the workload. However, given the nature of where you're located and the, what I label geopolitical realities, you have Seton Hall University, you have a nice downtown here, you're sandwiched between Newark and Irvington, you need more than that. And I think that four patrol units, the staffing levels that the department has now are appropriate, that the combination of supervising officers, if you had four on any given time, that would be a sufficient minimum to handle the demand and then be available to handle the excess work or the extra work that might arise because of where you are and the characteristics of your community. It's a little difficult to see. This is a sample schedule that we put together. And again, this is, I don't mean to imply that you should run out the door now and adopt this. But this is an example of a 10-hour shift. You could even stick with the 10 hours and 40 minutes that go on that exist now. And you could rearrange it slightly, reduce some officers at other, sometimes, and then add officers during the times when they might be more necessary. So here on the left-hand column are four proposed tours, 11:00 by 9:00, 9:00 by 7:00, 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and 5:00 PM to 3:00 AM. This is the hour of the day from the zero hour going across to the 23-hour 11:00 at night. And what this means to illustrate is that with this model, if you had two officers coming in 11 and staying till 9, you had three officers coming in at 9 and staying till 6:00 in the morning, and then three officers coming in at 7 and staying until 5:00 PM, and then two coming in at 5:00 PM and staying till 3, would result in this number of officers down at the bottom coming in. So instead of having that strict five, one lieutenant, one sergeant, five straight across the board with the overlaps that are currently in place now, you use the different combination or adding an extra shift to create the overlaps at times when they would be more available. So instead of having that kind of awkward jog in the middle of the day, this, it goes up and it stays up and then it comes down. So you would have more resources available at the times that you would need them, over and above what is actually called for by the demand. And another kind of ugly-looking chart, but nonetheless, this is what their schedule would look like and it would comport with the existing schedule that is in place now in South Orange, four on, four off. You can see on the leftmost column here, two officers and two, so they would just be back-to-back, and then 3, 3, 3, 3, and 2, 2. This adds up to 20. So you go from the 27 officers that are in place now to 20. So you could shave seven officers, realign the shifts somewhat, and come out with better coverage for the community. Now again, I understand that you just can't unilaterally change this, that this is something that has to be worked out with the union. And keeping in mind that there are numerous other possible alternatives that fit better than the current shift schedule that's in place now. But this is just an example that I tried to fit in the current shift kind of rotation now and layer it over the demand to try to make the best fit as possible. But there are a number of different combinations that might be considered. So in general, the current shift plan is inefficient. Those kind of jagged edges don't belong. The tour length doesn't work as well as it could. The overlaps are not maximized correctly. There are too many officers on patrol. Again, there's a 60%, you see in the report, there's a 60% figure that we like to see, that the ratio or the percentage of officers on patrol compared to the total number of officers in the department should be about 60%, 60, in the 60s. In South Orange, it's 80. That means they invest heavily on patrol. There's a lot of officers there and there's not enough officers doing other things. So the recommendation here is you could lower the number of officers on patrol, realign the shifts a little bit to get better coverage, and then take some of that excess and put them in places where you could get even greater deployment and greater efficiencies out of it. Looking at the staffing, I believe that the desk officer position is something that needs to be taken a hard look at, that having a lieutenant full-time inside the station house 24 hours a day, keeping in mind that could be two lieutenants for as many as four hours at a time inside the station house is something that you might consider taking a harder look at. That the walk-in traffic should be open to the public during business hours and that the civilian staff inside the station house should be enough to handle people coming in off the street. That having a lieutenant, a full-duty lieutenant, being the point of contact for the community is probably not the best use of that position. That could be taken a hard look at. Some other staffing and deployment recommendations that we include in there. And again, this goes along the lines of kind of despecializing units and broadening the scope. Couple of the units that exist now. And again, this is, if you didn't adopt this, it wouldn't be the end of the world. But the way that these are laid out, at least in my eyes, opened up some opportunities that might, you know, you could leverage the resources in a little bit better way. So you would merge the Community Relations/Special Investigation Unit position with the Traffic Bureau to create a more general-purpose unit, if you will. And I call it the Special Operations Unit. You could call it anything you want. But the idea would be that the way the department organizes the community into four different sectors, that you could have one officer assigned to each sector and then a sergeant supervising them, and then have them work together as a team, that they could do community policing activities, they could do proactive enforcement, they could do strategic planning, you name it, crime prevention. They could be the liaison to the community and they can refocus the traffic strategy that in the report we mentioned is necessary. Looking again at the investigative side of the organization, that with a lieutenant supervising three detectives and then another sergeant supervising one detective, probably better staffed if you had one sergeant supervising all of the detectives. And then again, the administration is fluid, too top-heavy. There are numerous command positions, lieutenants and captains, that probably could be rearranged and better served in other capacities. So we call for the elimination of at least one, elimination of one captain position and then converting that, one of those lieutenant positions to an administrative lieutenant position to handle the training, the budget, the fleet, the, so on and so forth. So this is what it would look like. Again, just kind of, you know, broad strokes is that the department would be organized into the executive part with the chief, one captain to be his aide, and then that administrative lieutenant. And then the investigation section would entail the one lieutenant in charge of investigations with the one sergeant and four detectives in criminal investigations and that one and four unit in special operations. And then the patrol side, and again, this is that reconfigured chart that was in the last few slides, and that results in two lieutenants, six sergeants, 20 officers. If you adopted all of these and hammered these out, you would have a net reduction in eight sworn positions in the agency. In my view, you would reduce the size of the agency by eight, but you would vastly improve their operational efficiency, both on the patrol side, the investigative side, and the administrative side. Some efficiencies in general that we speak about in the report, the technology. I know the department has a license plate reader. My understanding was that it was in a fixed location. License plate readers are better deployed in the vehicles. So if a, excuse me, license plate readers, they automatically scan the road, automatically scan license plates to see what license plates are either registration verifications or stolen vehicles. So when the plate, when the reader is at a fixed location, it has to alert the patrol to go find the car, as opposed to if it was in the car, you could just, it would all be one package together. So it would be easier to deploy. All of the technology that's in the radio cars for the officers should also be in the supervisor's vehicles. We're recommending that a new dispatch system, new records management, new CAD system should be looked at. Very complicated issue, a big-ticket item that somebody needs, not us, needs to, not me, but somebody needs to take a hard look at what combinations of hardware and software are better suited for what's going on for the organization. We're recommending a better case management system for the investigative side. You guys have the luxury of the detectives and the officers, too. They handle everything, you know. Any report that comes, that happens, any crime happens in South Orange, they will take the case. So that's a good thing. The bad thing is, is they take every case. And you could probably, with a little bit of management, you could triage some cases. Well, that's not really investigative. We'll just, you know, close that and put that on the side. It's more intelligence. But with a better case management system, you could leverage that opportunity. Sick leave, very, very high sick leave rate. I believe it was over 550 days of sick in calendar year 2011. And for an agency that size, there's a lot, that's a very, very high sick leave. I think in combination with the union and the... I think in combination with the union and the department and the board, that something needs to, you need to take a harder look at the sick leave practices and the sick leave management department. The policies and procedures need to be brought together and updated. They're in a couple of different places. The critical ones we looked at, they're in good shape, however, somebody needs to take a hard look and put them all together in one succinct and cohesive document. Facility is not in good shape, I mean, I don't have to tell you guys that. A substantial investment, excuse me, should be placed into improving and upgrading both the physical plant and the equipment that's in the building.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
When you did your charge previously about, I'm sorry, about how many people were on patrol at each time?
Yeah.
Did you, was that the actual number of people on patrol, or did you, I guess I'm asking, did you account for the sick leave as well?
No, the numbers that you saw on the graphs, that accounts for the actual number of people that are physically working.
Okay, and so that takes the sick leave into account?
Yes. Well, the police department has a policy that when they don't go below a certain number, they hire back on overtime if somebody goes sick.
Okay, thank you.
And then also to improve efficiency, you know, the best resource that your organization has is the members itself, themselves. And they're filled with ideas and energy, and they want to work hard, and they want to do the right thing, and they're, you know, consummate professionals. So establishing a formal, you couldn't even call it an informal labor management committee where the chief and the union and the officers work together to identify initiatives, improvements, and then, you know, bring them to you or implement them if they're implementable. And it's a great way of improving all sorts of efficiencies that we haven't even identified. And then lastly is this notion of performance management, is that the department needs to do a better job of developing measures and benchmark key performance indicators, and then using that information as a way of driving the activities and the performance of the officers and the units and the entire organization. Some simple categories of crime, disorder, traffic, community relations, personnel, and management operations, all can lend themselves to this idea of performance management, where you ascribe activities, you ascribe quantitative labels to activities and then use that information to drive the performance. That would include developing a multi-year strategic plan and an annual plan thereafter, and then integrating the personnel evaluations within that system. So in other words, if the plan is to reduce crime, well then, everybody in the agency is evaluated on their contribution to that goal. And within that, you would build in community satisfaction measures, is that the community, and their perceived and actual satisfaction with the performance of the department should be part and parcel of the strategic footprint of the department. And then that cascades back up to you guys, where there is a thorough and accurate reporting of that, as I said, in strategic plans, in annual reports, and then presentations in town hall meetings in front of this body to report basically, you know, their activities over the year or the quarter or the half-year or whatever the case may be. But this becomes kind of an overarching performance management system to drive the activities of the officers in the department. And I'm happy to take any questions? I believe that's, yep, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, yeah. I think we're all gonna probably have a couple of questions. I know I've got a few here that I'd like to run through, and I'll open up to the rest of the trustees as well. And if people have questions on any of these questions, please feel free to add in, although I'd like to get through my list. So there are a couple of things. One is, one of the comments that I made on the draft report that we got was to talk a little bit more about Seton Hall University. That's obviously a big component in town. I'm curious about the different ways that calls are responded to on campus, how police operate on campus, how their security operates with the police, how their security operates off-campus. Didn't really see that addressed in the final report, could you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, well, I think the department and Seton Hall University have a great working relationship with each other. We were on the campus, we visited with the security, the public safety on campus, and speaking with the chief and evaluating their plans, they are in lockstep with the university. I know that they have directed patrols in and around the university. When there were crime conditions at Spike, the department is very responsive to that. There is ample resources available to address any of the demand that Seton Hall puts on the department, and outside of that, there is really, I don't believe, any issue as far as the department's capacity, ability to handle the demands that's generated by Seton Hall.
Well, one of the questions that has come up has been, you know, the role that the Seton Hall public safety and security people play on areas adjacent to campus, it's a discussion that we've been having for the past year or two. I was, I guess, interested in seeing if there was any best practices from other towns that have universities about whether they allow the security or public safety off-campus, or whether they like to keep them on-campus, or how that relationship exists here compared to other places.
Well, I didn't study the Seton Hall public safety, so I can't speak directly to that. I do know around the country and in best practices, and considering where I'm from, I'm from Sacred Heart University, that is in Bridgeport, Fairfield, Connecticut. So I do know that it's a mixed bag, that the police generally not, don't stray too far onto campus, and the public safety doesn't stray too far off-campus unless there's some type of pre-existing agreement to that. I didn't look at their operations. I know that the department has a good relationship with the university, and that the deployment is acceptable considering what they, what they, the man they put on the department and how the department responds to that.
Alex, I guess one final question to that. Was there any, did you do any comparing the crime stats to see what percentage of the crimes, sort of cause, were from Seton Hall?
No.
Okay.
Okay, the next questions I had were related to the call-for-service reduction ideas that you discussed in the report just now. I guess, you know, one of the questions that I have is, you know, around things like alarm responses or even the motor vehicle accidents that just involve property damage, that in those kind of incidents, a lot of the feedback that I've heard from community members is that they appreciate, you know, this very quick, as you noted, the very quick response time, you know, taking the report, getting to speak to a police officer, a person leaving, same with, you know, someone mistakenly dialing 911 and getting a police officer three minutes later at their front door. You know, my understanding and my study of, you know, community police relations is that the more positive interactions that citizens have with law enforcement, the more likely they are in the future to be, to participate in crime prevention, whether that's through calling because of a suspicious person, or just having that on their mind is something that they're working on. I guess one of the concerns that I had, and this was also my earlier comments about this report, was that what kind of impact would reducing those kind of calls have on those aspects of the community?
Well, I think you, a couple of issues that you raised that I'd like to address. Number one is that you are absolutely right, that the more positive interactions that are generated between the police and the community, the more likely they are to get involved, the community is to get involved, that they're more likely to call when suspicious activity has occurred, and more likely to have a positive view of the officers and vice versa, the officers have a positive view of the citizen. No doubt about that. However, and secondly, I raise that alternative, like that, if you will, the alternative response as an idea, that, you know, one of the, one of the nice things about the South Orange police philosophy is that they will respond to everything and anything, just like I had mentioned, they will take every case, and they do it with pride. And that is how they view their role in the community and what they think that the community expects. And if that's what you expect, well, there's nothing wrong with that. However, I do know that around the country, that when that layer of response, if you will, is eliminated, it doesn't change a thing. That it is, it is an idea that you can consider, along with the other ideas that are potentially on the table that you might consider. And if you didn't change anything, you're fine, because you still have that cushion of resources available to handle the workload that exists in the community. Now, having said all of that, that there are other ways, more structured ways to engage positive community reactions, excuse me, positive community interactions. Ownership of patrol beats, the special operations team, a more aggressive community relations program, a more aggressive crime prevention program, all of these things are potential ways that you could, you know, you could overcome that lack of 9/11 response, if you will. But if you didn't change a thing, you'd be fine, and if you eliminated it altogether, you would be fine.
I took it, you know, I wasn't so concerned about the motor vehicle accidents, sometimes I think it's good to have an officer there so that things don't get out of hand, but I was more interested about the alarms, and I know you go into it in more detail in your report, about the number of false alarms, which I'm not sure we know what percentage of our calls are false alarms.
Sure.
But you do recommend some ways to cut down on the number of alarms.
Yeah.
And I know years ago with the police chief, we actually discussed implementing fines for people, which we didn't really want to do.
Yeah, fine.
But I think you, I think you talked about other ways about having, I think you referred to one as a double call-in system.
Double call, yeah.
Which could greatly reduce the number of calls to make sure the officer's available for something that's more important.
Sure. So, for example, when the alarm comes in, the first call is back to the homeowner and say, hey, did you trip that by accident? And I say, oh, very sorry, you know, that was an accident. Well, you don't have to, now, we understand that, you know, if you get a burglar on the other line, and say, oh yeah, it's by accident, so there's a way of, you know, of doing that, but certainly...
Well, what is the way of doing that?
Well, you put the onus on the alarm company, that it's the homeowner and the alarm company that have to, have to make sure that this is a legitimate burglary versus a false alarm, and that it's not a waste of 98 percent of the, in your case, it's almost 15 percent of all of your calls are false. So, you know, if you push that back on the homeowner and the alarm company, you know, the alarm company comes in and slaps an alarm at somebody's house and they pick them up to the bill, and you're left picking up the tab on responding to it. So you need to push it back a little bit on them and say, hey, we know that 98 percent of these are false.
When my alarm goes off, I get a call from the alarm company, and they ask me for a password. If I don't give a password, or they ask me if everything's okay, if it's not, you know, they say, do you want us to dispatch the police? And then the determination is on me, and of course, if I don't answer my phone, they dispatch the police. But I thought most alarm companies operated that way, most major companies.
And in your case, the South Orange police would go anyway.
How do they know?
But there would also be, I mean, the number of these calls that are canceled, I mean, do you have a percentage of that, the alarm calls that are canceled while the officer's en route because that callback did happen?
We eliminated those. These are just, these are just the, the calls that appear in this, in this analysis are just the calls that are responded to. The zero-minute calls that cancels are not...
Let me ask you a question in a different way. The number of alarms that we have, how does that compare to a typical town?
High.
It's high.
Yeah, with 18, with 18 percent of your, of your, that's high.
Okay.
That's why it should be in the single digits, six to 70 percent.
Okay. This thing is something we should probably explore and maybe we should make no changes, maybe there's a way to improve it.
There was a related, a couple of questions that I had about the saturation index.
Sure.
One, I guess, is kind of my question about the 60 percent number. You know, there are some mentions in the report about, you know, kind of a hesitancy or reluctance to use like universal standards. This seems to be one, and I guess my question would be, you know, how does that, and I have a couple of questions about the SI, how does that 60 percent compare, I mean, urban areas versus rural areas, or high-crime areas versus low-crime areas? And I would imagine that, you know, to really get a good idea of, you know, if one were to try and find the maximum efficiency, that it would take into account the unique circumstances of the town, whereas the 60 percent seems, you know, universal to anywhere.
Well, it is universal everywhere. Well, stepping back, is that we don't use this as a hard and fast benchmark. So if you went over that in periods of the day, or comfortably under it on other times of the day, you know, that would be okay. So it's, it's a kind of, it's taken at like arm's length and not as an absolute. The other thing to keep in mind is that is a function of the call demand and the number of officers that are actually working here. So it doesn't necessarily vary between urban, rural, it is you, this is what, this is what you have. You have a surplus of people on patrol, and that's a good thing. I mean, you have a lot of officers that are driving around. My other recommendations that we put forward here are to engage those officers in other ways that don't necessarily involve that positive interaction at the end of a 9/11 call, that there could be structured activities, structured things that they could work on on a day-to-day basis, ownership of their beats, attending community meetings, so on and so forth, that don't necessarily are driven by, you know, driven by the radio. But that 60 percent is a benchmark, it's not, it's not a law like in physics, it's just something that we kind of take into consideration to evaluate the staffing versus the workload when we look at a department. And even 60 percent is high. If you were at 60 percent, your men and women out there would be hustling. So, you know, in urban areas where the patrol staff is short-changed, you'll see that number in the 70s and 80s. So it's, it's, it is here, and it's, it is, it is what's going on in South Orange, and it's just one evaluation of the patrol availability, staffing availability.
When you calculate that number, is there a difference between, or is there any, I guess, tension paid to the procedures that are used, whether they're informal or not, of, you know, officers calling back into service when they're done with the call? So for example, the difference in, you know, what I, what I think I've noticed in South Orange is that, you know, quicker than maybe in some other places, an officer will call back into service after they clear the scene, which makes them available for another call, but it shows in the graph that you showed as non-committed time.
That's true.
Even though it is time that is committed to filing a report or dealing with whatever logistics exists from the scene that they just cleared from.
That's true, and that is an issue with it, because, you know, officers, they don't want to be, you know, even amongst themselves, they don't want to be, you know, out on a call doing their paperwork for an hour, that they'll just take the information. As a matter of fact, when I was in one of the cars running around patrol, the officer took, he took a, he took out his, what the hell are you on, his smartphone, and basically took a picture of the, of the information and said, I'll do the report later. So yeah, that does exist. Another way of looking at that is the total service time. So when I see that the average service time for a call for service is 22 minutes, that's fast. So I'm fairly certain, as you just, as you are, that they're, you know, they're going back into service and doing the paperwork later on. I'm with you on that. However, when you take all of those things into totality, and you look at the low level of saturation and the low service time, there's still ample resources available on patrol.
So you don't, you don't think that that difference makes up for a big enough piece that would...
No, not that much. We're talking at an average about 17, 8 percent saturation, but if you, if you were, you know, pushing the 50s, you, they, these guys would be hustling. But there's, you know, even, even accounting for that fact that they're doing the paperwork on the side, that there's more than ample, ample room there.
Can I make one follow-up on that question, and that's one of the things that struck me, was the service time, the average service time, and I think you had indicated it was 22 minutes times the 1.4 guys equals 30.8 minutes, and I think you prefaced it by saying you usually look for like 60 minutes.
60, yeah.
So to me, that's saying, okay, they're either doing it twice as fast as everyone else in, on average, or perhaps some of these nuances they're clocking back in.
Yeah, no doubt.
And so if you, if you just simply took their number of calls and you made it to 60 minutes, that's the average, then virtually all those colored charts would all double and go up, and the 18 percent would become 36 percent.
That's a good way of looking at it, yeah.
Okay, and which would then put you much more closer to the 60. My question is, are they getting penalized for their efficiency?
They could be, yeah.
Because they do it too quickly.
But again...
Or are they clocking in, you know, going back out of service?
If I was here telling you that you needed to cut them, you know, then I would say, yeah, they'd be penalized, but I think that's a, that's a good way of looking at it, that if you put them back to the average at 60 and double the saturation, you'd still be at 36.
Right.
And considering, you know, what's going on around you, that they're at the right level, they're at the right number now, regardless of what the saturation is.
One of the, one of the other questions that I had about, you know, this section of the report was the difference between the committed time and non-committed time, which by kind of reading the report, by interpreting that language in the report, it seems to be productive time and non-productive time. And that seems to be the basis in which, you know, you use to kind of create the staffing levels. I guess my question is, you know, obviously the patrols, and we've kind of talked about it a little bit, and you mentioned it during your presentation, that during that non-committed time, there's definitely, in my opinion at least, there's definitely a large value added to the being out there, being seen, and especially for a town like us, it's on borders of high-crime areas, you know, I'm really interested in the value of having a patrol car on the street in those areas driving around. And, you know, there's a lot of great ways to quantify, you know, the number of calls and the schedules and response times and all that, but how do you quantify, and that seems to be somewhat absent from the report, unless I missed something, of quantifying the value of non-committed time spent on just driving around?
I wish I could help you. It is almost, I don't know of a measure that quantifies that, that quantity, it's, you're trying to define a negative, and I don't really have a solution for you.
But I guess my concern is that those figures, the way that's being calculated with that number, with that as an unknown, are used to calculate this, you know, table of organization.
I don't mean to cut you off, but...
No, go ahead.
Well, I just want to go back to the notion of productive versus not productive time. That's not what, what I'm saying at all. What I'm, what I'm suggesting is that that 60 percent threshold, that when the workload through calls for service reaches that threshold, or even gets close to that threshold, that that... that proactive or that self-initiated work stops because the officers are very, very busy and they need to keep themselves available to handle the next call. So you, any available time that they would have, you would lose that deterrent effect driving around, trying to, you know, being nosy, looking at places, checking high-crime areas, patrolling, you know, the university because they are basically waiting for the next call. So, number one, I can't quantify, you know, what value that is. But what I can tell you is that once, we believe in the field, that once you pass that threshold, all of that other good stuff stops. Looking at your data, you're well within that. So you definitely have a surplus of patrol resources that can do those things. How they're quantified is in those proactive things that I had mentioned. Using performance measures to drive the activities of the officers, identifying the crime hotspots, the causes of the traffic accidents and saying, you know, go out there and do something about the causes of these things as opposed to just a, you know, a kind of just deterrent, just a general deterrent. And I think those activities and that approach works much better than just having people driving around.
I guess the question is, in my head, is when you talk about, when I think about the amount of, the types of time that's being spent by not only a police officer but really an employee in general, if anywhere, that there's really three categories. There's, you know, committed time when you're in service, you're doing something that you must do at that moment.
Right.
There's a time when you're doing something that is adding value to the organization, but you're not necessarily committed to whatever that thing is. And then there's kind of your free time that's totally okay to have, you know, where you're like taking a breath for a little bit. And I guess the two categories to me, seems like that, the third category that's there in my head, the non-committed but productive time is placed in the non-committed category. So if the committed category is used to ascertain what the staffing level should be and that doubles because we're clearing calls efficiently, so now we're from twenty to forty, and maybe from forty to fifty or in the fifties, there's that time of non-committed but productive time where you're filling out a report or where you're driving around, you know, an area, you know, a border area on town. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, you know, where those numbers come from and where that category fits in. That extra category that I would, that non-committed productive time.
The non-committed productive time.
And that seems like that falls in the non-committed category, which seems to imply that it's time that could be used working even though...
Yes.
What I'm saying is that they might already be.
Exactly. But the notion of the sixty percent is that when that workload through calls gets to sixty percent, that non-committed productive time ceases. That's what I'm suggesting.
Right. I guess my point, maybe I'm not being as clear as I could, you know, there's, you know, a discussion, you know, in one of the, I mean, in this section, I guess, there's in some of the various data show that patrol services in the SOPD is overstaffed.
Yeah.
Reductions in patrol division can be achieved even while managing CFS volume more aggressively, thus making the overall function of the SOPD more efficient and cost-effective, which was a little confusing because actually in that, on the same page, there was another sentence that said, "Taken together, our analysis of occupied time, number of officers per call and response time shows an efficient deployment of patrol officers." So I was a little confused by those two statements.
Yes, I'm with you. Number one, first of all, I'm not suggesting that you should go below the four officers that you currently have for all the reasons that you cite, regardless of what the workload suggests. And I'm not suggesting that you need to cut down to that level that we've identified. You know, given what we've identified, you know, even taking into account, you could probably double it, you'd still be safely under the threshold that we would consider to have enough patrol staffing. Now, having that in mind, it needs to be taken into the context of the ten-hour and forty-minute shift as it's currently designed, that if you reconfigured that, you could cut the patrol staffing, have it deployed better, be well within those margins, and then use the performance management philosophy as a way of directing the activities of the officers more effectively. That's, I think, sort of look at one of those pieces of the puzzle in and of itself loses it when you've taken them all together. I understand what you're saying. I think I understand what you're saying. But it's a little bit more, you know, the other pieces have to be added to paint the picture clearer.
What I took from this is that we could have a much more efficient schedule. It wasn't so much about cutting police or anything.
Right.
I took from it that we could have a more efficient schedule, which would put more police on the street at peak times.
Right.
And necessary times. That's how I read the thing. And I think you're, you know, like you're, I don't want to, you're pinpointing on one thing about looking at the whole picture.
That's how I looked at it, that this really identified efficiencies and how by adjusting the schedule, we could free up the officers to be very creative and proactive and make it, just build upon the work and the success that they do. But also, from a professional level, be more satisfying to them because this is their career and this is where they spend a lot of life. So by putting these efficiencies in and freeing them up to take initiatives and be creative and a collaborative process with metrics and measurements in, it's a win-win for all. So I, when I saw, when I looked at this, I said, oh, wow. So instead of just being reactive, they can be proactive, but I didn't see this as a template to cut headcount.
The big takeaway I got was more efficient schedule. We need to improve the facilities.
Definitely.
And upgrade the equipment.
Yeah.
That was the three takeaways I had. I didn't really get a sense that he was pushing to do anything else. Yes, he said, you know, it's possible to work with less officers, but he didn't say to do it. You know, but I think that, I think right now we should focus on those three goals from the report, which to me were priorities, but, you know, I figured you should ask him all those questions first. But I did have one other question for you also about, in your scope, you talk about meeting with community stakeholders. I don't think you met with the neighborhood watch person who was going to speak later. And you talk about having a crime watch person.
Mm-hmm.
But we do have a crime watch neighborhood watch person who has broken the town into different regions and zones.
Yep.
Emails us and the police do meet with community groups either via the neighborhood watch meetings or other such things. And we have had town hall forums with the police chief and the captain in the back. So those are some things that we've done, which I felt, you know, didn't quite come out in the report. But I just wanted to know why you didn't meet with the neighborhood watch person or the chair of the public safety committee or any of the trustees? I was just, you know, it seemed, struck me as strange.
Well, I'm not sure I have a, anything I can say is going to satisfy you.
Okay.
That's something that we do not do. I mean, I, and I've done a dozen, two dozen of these studies. And, you know, I like to think that the focus is on the department. And I understand that you have, you know, concerns and issues, but...
But we have, we make policy decisions.
I understand.
So that's, you know, that was the only reason why I asked. It's, you know, it's fine. And I think, you know, the report overall, I get a good sense of it. I just think you would have gotten a lot more if you had spoken to the neighborhood watch and the chair of the public safety committee at least.
I understand. Point taken.
Dr. McCabe, I have a few questions if I may.
Sure.
Obviously, first, thanks for coming down and sharing your presentation and for the report. I know you talked a little bit about your background, but again, for the benefit of the media and the people that are watching, could you share a little bit about ICMA, just briefly, what you guys do? And what other, you just said you've done about a dozen or two dozen of these. Maybe you could share some of the other municipalities you've worked with previously?
Sure. Well, ICMA is a member group. There's nine thousand members in the International City Managers Association. It's the most common from local government in the United States. And I am part of a, what's called the Center for Public Safety Management. I'm part of a team of professionals, academics, that are engaged by, you know, communities like South Orange to go out and study. We study police, fire, EMS. We have been in twenty-seven states. I think we're up to a hundred and fifty separate studies over the last six years. I've been the lead on about a dozen and participated in a dozen more, everywhere from Florida to Washington State, from California to, I guess we were up in Rhode Island is our father's northeast.
And some of the other, any others in New Jersey that you personally have been involved with?
That I have not, no. But we have been in New Jersey, none that I have been personally involved in.
Okay. Thank you. One question I had specifically about the report, and I, we just got the final report, you know, a couple of days ago, so I read it relatively quickly. But the, did you touch on the approach? As you know, the department uses a zone approach, right? Which I assume is fairly typical.
Yes.
Do you have any commentary on the approach, the fact that there's four zones in the town? And is that appropriate for a town of this size?
Sure.
Have you guys weighed in on that?
Well, the zone approach is what I was speaking to with the special operations, that kind of hybrid unit where the four officers wouldn't just be, you know, randomly assigned, you know, throughout the community, that they would have specific responsibilities for that zone. So it would take it off of the patrols, you know, with that twenty-four hours, seven patrol responsibility, and it would fix personal responsibility, if you will, for the officers in those zones. And getting to, you know, drilling down further into the community, working with the community groups, understanding the conditions better, knowing the neighborhood better, and leveraging that relationship to have those positive interactions and take the performance metrics and use that as a way of, you know, diving into the neighborhoods. So there's two pieces to the puzzle. Number one is the nine-eleven response, that, you know, the cars designated by zones. You know, if one zone is occupied, they'll send anybody, you know, whoever's available. So that gets watered down a little bit. It's good to have that designated zone so the officers, when they're on that free patrol, can concentrate on those areas. But more appropriately is to affix ownership, if you will, on a sustained kind of long-term basis, that officers have beats, zones, if you will, that they can really have that more positive and long-term relationship with the community.
Okay. And one question about kind of the process. I know it's been a major point of contention on how long this has taken. We did have the draft report literally, you know, five months ago, back in July. I know there was a period of time where we were soliciting feedback from the board and collecting that and then passed it. And then there was several months where we were kind of in a black hole and I know it caused a lot of angst certainly amongst the board and most certainly amongst the department waiting. Now, obviously, they have now seen the report or have, the report is now available, which is a good thing. But can you explain, help me understand, what's transpired over the past five months?
Yeah, well, some of it is my fault and some of it I can't explain. We were here in the spring and this was one of the fastest turnarounds on the data. See, there's two pieces, two streams that go here. There's an operational piece and there's the data analysis piece, and then they get merged at the end. So the data was turned around fastest I've, any project that I've worked on. So literally, my work came back from the editor and was available in, I think, July. So we were here in late spring and by the beginning of the summer, you know, we could have wrapped this up. What happened between July and October, I'm at a loss to understand what happened. But I know that in sometime in October, there were other comments that I had not seen yet. And I think from the village president, I had not seen his comments until sometime in October. Whether I had them and didn't recognize them or didn't get them, I couldn't tell you. So then Hurricane Sandy hit and it kind of put us off for a couple of weeks. And then it was just a matter of, you know, tying up the loose ends and getting it finalized. But part of that is my fault and part of it I have no, I can't, I can't speak.
Yeah. It's unfortunate, you know, right? I mean, I think, I think it's a very comprehensive report and it just added to the angst of the nature of the report. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, I guess, kind of on the, I guess, so the report was generated by a team.
Yes.
Right? So, you know, I have a couple of concerns that, you know, it's difficult to kind of go through without, you know, taking up everybody's night here. But there are a number of areas in the report that I read and, you know, I kind of shook my head. I didn't really understand the recommendations that were made or, you know, some of them seemed a little generic, I guess. And, you know, one of them, for example, is when talking about the Traffic Bureau, there's a, you know, there's a paragraph that, you know, I'm only reading it because I think, I've seen this, I have a couple of notes here from other areas that are pretty similar. And the paragraph is, "Presently, the Bureau works diligently in providing enforcement, engineering, and education programs designed to improve traffic safety. The recommendation is to focus these efforts to a greater extent and rely on a more focused identification of the specific problems and then use resources to target those problems in a coordinated and integrated fashion." I just honestly don't really, I don't really know what that recommendation is.
My apologies, that's a little academic speak there. Don't mean to make it more confusing than it is. But it, the idea is to take the data. Where are the accidents happening? When are they happening? Why are they happening? Who are the most at-risk drivers? And then use that information to tail of the enforcement efforts, to tail of the engineering changes, tailing the education programs to specifically address those issues. That's as simple as it gets. As opposed to a scatter shot, go out and write summonses and pull over cars and be deterrent. It's focused, kind of driven by the numbers, where, when, who, what, how, and why, and then using the resources to specifically direct those issues.
On that note, I guess near that section was about the traffic control officer on South Orange, just outside. And the report, you know, dismisses the position and saying it's unnecessary. Was there any traffic studies done to determine?
None, no.
Okay. So it's just kind of looking at the intersection and saying...
Looking at the intersection, there's a traffic control signal, there's no need for a human being there. His purpose, his services can be put to much better purposes than directing traffic.
I see that, I find that interesting and I think that that might have helped, helped with the observation.
It's that simple. Sorry.
Helped with the observation of being there. The street was narrow and that's a thoroughfare from multiple towns. And without him there, and I go up that route every day, the bottleneck in the backup is incredible. But with having him there, and I think that you would have been able to pick that up, and these are these intangibles or nuances, for lack of a better way to articulate it, that if you had did a study or just observed it, just gone up in those times there, you could see how he kept the traffic moving. Without that, it's a nightmare.
We actually did a...
Because the two lanes for a stretch of several blocks narrow down to one lane.
I appreciate that. And I was here and I was here on a nice crowded rainy day, just like you had mentioned. And...
So, no, but I literally want to understand. I'm not, I'm looking for, this is constructive, so I'm not looking to...
Yes, no, I appreciate that.
Whatever. So I'm looking to understand, if you experience that, then what is your analysis as to justify the lack of need for someone to move traffic and diffuse or manage bottlenecks? I need to understand that.
Well, perhaps I'm from New York and maybe my perception of traffic is a little different. But having a human being direct and control traffic like that can be replaced with proper signage. Like you said, if bottleneck's there, there are roads coming in, that, in my view, lends itself to more appropriate reengineering of that intersection.
Yeah, but listen, when he's there managing it and he stands right pretty much, so like there's a short light there, he is asking, moving traffic and making the determination and ignoring the light. Because if, we do have a traffic light there. If we followed the traffic light, the backup would be incredible. So he ignores the light and he waves the traffic on to keep it continuously moving. He, you know, he reads it and turns it and he truly keeps it moving.
Can I just say one thing? You know, we, when he retired and he was away from the position for a while, we did have a, it was not pretty there and we did bring him back because it helped, partly because when the kids came home from school, we felt it was a safety issue. But I think a bigger issue, feeling to Dever's point, is the, was the synchronization of the lights create a real traffic problem? And the intersection may be clearly more, but the synchronization, which the county puts in place, is so screwed up that you get too much backed up traffic if you don't have someone there.
And people can't get out of the light.
And I don't want to make it, you know, a big, I think we should focus on other stuff because I think this is really minor to the rest of the report. So I think we should focus on it.
Okay.
One of my concerns about this item that, you know, replicated a few other places was, I guess, you know, there's a lot of interest in using data-driven solutions and there's no data for this solution.
Well, in that circumstance, I don't, in my professional opinion, I don't need data to tell me that there are human beings not belong directing traffic there. And I know we're just not going to agree on that, and that's fine.
No, we're not, although we're the ones who've lived in town for a number of years.
No, I understand where you're coming from. And I think that, that falls under the category of, of the calls that, you know, you, you pay for. And that's a good thing. And if, in your, you know, if you decide that that person is necessary there, then that's great. You know, you should do that. What, all I'm suggesting is that that's an opportunity where, in my professional opinion, that, that's not necessary. And you can, you can, you can disagree with that, and that's okay. I mean, if you're willing to pay for that, that's fine.
I just was trying to understand why you determined it was unnecessary, but I won't belabor it.
Okay.
I just wanted to understand, because this should be an informed and an objective assessment of your analysis.
One of the other, you know, comments that's also, you know, kind of similar to that was the discussion about license plate readers, which reads that one piece of equipment that should be considered for inclusion in patrol vehicles are automatic license plate readers. You know, that's something that we do already have deployed on a patrol vehicle currently. And there were, you know, just a couple of areas like that in the report, that again, I don't want to spend time going through each one of them, but, you know, I guess, you know, how'd you guys miss that?
Well, I wasn't informed of it. I mean, I was, I asked specifically, we asked those, that particular question in every study that we do. And the information I was given is that there is a license plate reader and it is in a fixed location. I don't know the location off the top of my head, it's no...
It's not public.
Okay. All right. I don't know, I mean, I was told, but I don't remember. So that struck me as, as inappropriate, that the more efficient way of doing is deploying it in the car. Now, if it's in a car, that's great, you probably only need one. But I was not informed of that.
We have both.
Excuse me?
We have both, one of each.
So I did not go in every, in every police car.
I have some.
But I was told that there was one in a fixed location.
Okay. Let me finish up with a couple of mine. I know some of the proceeds of some more questions as well. One of the questions about the detective bureau, when talking about, you know, every criminal complaint getting assigned to detective, what's the amount of time in that, you know, to save time that someone should review those complaints first? How much time is spent on the review process? And how many of those investigations, what percentage of those investigations do you expect, if it were reviewed, to not be fully investigated? So from reading that, I have no idea if time would even be saved. It sounds like there has to be a police officer who would have to review the investigation as well. So does a sergeant or lieutenant do that, or is that a detective?
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question.
The question is a couple-fold. In, in the recommendation about having criminal complaints reviewed before they're assigned to a detective.
Okay.
The question is, how many of those investigations would you expect to not be investigated because of that review process? So how much time and the investigation end does that save? And how much time is it going to take for someone to do the review?
Okay.
And who in the police department would do that review?
Well, there's a couple of answers there. Number one, it's, it's impossible to give you a definitive answer without the data. And we weren't able to extract that data from the department. So just in my experience, the overwhelming number of cases, we could just put in past property crimes. So if somebody's bike gets stolen from, from their driveway, that is just closed. That is not assigned, that is not investigated, it is just closed. There is no solubility of that, there are no investigative leads, it just doesn't warrant anything other, if you, if you want, a phone call back to the complainant saying, you know, we have your case, if you have any further information, please call us. So it's minimal, and it can be done by the officers on the scene. So with the right training and the right, you know, policy in place, when they're at the scene of a past crime, they can just close it. It never goes past that. The number of those is the lion, there's a lion's share of cases that you have. So what happens to all that information? Well, it just doesn't, you know, disappear. That becomes the intelligence information that you're able to drive the activities of the officers on a day-to-day basis. It becomes that, that information for proactive work, as opposed to just closing cases and filing cases and chasing, you know, ghosts. You can use the information more productively.
Okay. And I guess, you know, I'll, I'll close my comments for now with a couple overall comments. And I do want to hear some of the other questions. You know, there were a couple of areas in here, you know, some parts of the report, you know, I think were pretty interesting. And it was interesting seeing some of the way the data was displayed. But there were a number of areas in the report that I felt did not really dive into the issues as much as I was expecting to see. You know, I understand the academic pieces, you know, I'm getting my master's degree in public administration and criminal justice, and, you know, I've studied these issues for a while myself, too. And there were, you know, a number of areas where I was reading, I said, well, that's an interesting discussion, and then it just kind of ended. And, you know, the, the, I guess, the benefits of, you know, non-committed patrol time is something I'm really interested in, that's not really discussed here. And as you said, it sounded like it was very difficult to get to that number. And, you know, some of the other technology-related aspects, which I think are really important, for example, you know, you know, case management, software systems and things like that, or, you know, it's suggested to use one. And in the next paragraph, I'm expecting, you know, an explanation of, you know, there are three main systems that most police departments use, you know, we've looked at all of them, and this one is by far the best, and we recommend that you, you know, look at these options, or we recommend this one in particular. And there were a few areas like that, you know, where there's, you know, kind of a, a discussion about the problem that goes into a little bit of data, but then the solution is, you know, you know, I guess, very seemingly superficial.
I understand. And I wish it was that easy to say, here are the three, and we like this one the best. And when you see that, it's really because the solution is unique to the organization, and they really need to dive in, understand that there's a problem here. And so, for example, in the, in the IT section, there's literally hundreds of possible alternatives. We like a lot of them. We've seen them all over the country, and they're used to, and it doesn't really matter on the system, it's the use of the system by the people. So, you know, there is just too many of them to say, yeah, this is the one we like. Because if you got the one that we like, and the people aren't willing to use it, then it's the worst system you could possibly buy. So the onus is really on the organization to roll up its sleeves and dive in and figure out what's best for them and how they're going to use it. And then how they're going to be forced to use that information to drive the performance of the entire organization. So I hear what you're saying, I apologize if it comes off as superficial, but the, the solution really isn't that concrete.
Yeah, and just a key off of that, that was one of the comments that I had, and we had a conversation about that specifically. A lot of your recommendations are really driven by data collection and analytic tools. And I don't think we have that set of tools or the, the capture of the information currently. And it would have been appropriate, I think, in the recommendation, at least to tell us what type of tier of information system that we really should be looking for. Not the specific company that manufactures the particular product. And recommendation of type of analytic tools that we should be using to support that, that type of environment. The other, I, just as a side question and a collection of data, do you have statistics on the number of mutual aid calls either by us or to us?
I do not.
I didn't hear your question.
Mutual aid calls.
I do not, I'm sorry.
But, but a lot of it, and I was looking forward to more description of analytic tool, what you would recommend, how would you use it? Do we have a dashboard? Do we have a, none of that came through in the report.
And again, it's, I wish it was that simple. And we did have this discussion.
Yes.
And, you know, I don't want to just rehash it, but for the benefit of everyone, we don't have a recommendation on tier one or tier two information systems. You know, if you looked at the hundreds, I mean, well, there were probably a dozen or so in tier one and probably another hundred in tier two, I mean, any one of them potentially would work here, any one of them.
Can I ask you what tier one and tier two means?
I don't know specifically how they get categorized. The, the larger systems are in the tier one, they're the most common names, like Motorola, New World.
Okay, I got it.
And expensive.
And expensive. And, and they will work with you to tailor it, any one of them will work with you to tailor the system to meet the needs that the department has. So it's, it's hard for me, it's, you know, it's like saying, you need a new car. And then saying, I like Toyota, but, you know, it's just so many possible alternatives that you could pick, that it would be almost unfair for me to say, yeah, you gotta pick one out of tier two, tier one because of X, Y, and Z. And, and we had this conversation.
Yes.
Is that the preferred approach is to get the organization to use the information, to understand how to use the information, and then develop the infrastructure, the information infrastructure around that.
So the recommendation is we need this tool, and the police should, should pick out that exact specifics.
And then also, at the same time, get into this, into the habit of using the data. You know, it could be as simple as on a piece of paper right now. And then using the data as a way of driving the performance, and then understanding what information system supports that, that data collection and, and use management.
I think that's a good segue to my question, if you don't mind. One of the recommendations you make on page eighty-four, after you talk about the need for a dashboard and a set of performance indicators driven by the data collection, is that we should have an analyst position. Given what you just said, could we have an analyst position now who would help us figure out what kind of system we should have, who, you know, might in fact be working with paper in the beginning? Or is this the kind of thing where you really need to put in place the data collection, you know, sort of whatever South Orange version of a compstat system?
Right.
Which I assume you're familiar with, since you said you were with NYPD. And the analysis comes out of that system.
Right.
Because one of the things that I was actually sort of shocked at, because I started working in New York after actually being a prosecutor in a county in New Jersey and working with the fifteen towns in that county, their police departments very, very closely, I was surprised that after the advent and popularization throughout the United States of compstat between ninety-three, when I started working in New York, Giuliani was elected mayor, and I left there in two thousand and three to, you know, come back to New Jersey, that we didn't have that here. You know, we didn't even have any version of, you know, village version, I'll call it, of something like compstat. And I think the other major, what I would think of as the, frankly, the major recommendation, because some of the other things are obvious, in addition to the three that trustee Rosner mentioned, is this. Because I think, you know, especially as a policymaking board, good data begets good policy, and we just don't have it. And I, I was, so, so that's my first question. Can, can we get the analyst position first, or convert one of the, you know, the tasks that present officers are doing to this position, and use that to drive what kind of system we want to put into place?
That's exactly how, how we go.
Okay.
And then what might morph out of that is a civilian position that would become the full-time analyst. But right now, you know, you could use the existing uniform staff to dive into that process. But it's not only just with crime, it's with traffic, it's with community satisfaction, it's with employee satisfaction. It's all of the things that the department should be doing. And, you know, starting with the uniform position, figuring out how to collect the information, what information system supports that, and then rolling it out, eventually evolving it into where it would be a civilian employee that would do it.
And do you see that position as above and beyond the table of organization you laid out here, or including within it?
Including within it. I, I would think either one of the lieutenants or one of the detectives might, might do it, or the special operations sergeant would be probably a best fit, would be that, that person. Because they would have their fingers in a lot of different fights.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think would be a good idea. And just going back a couple pages in the goals and direct, goals and objectives section of your report, you talk about the fact that the department does not have a multi-year, long-range strategic plan. It doesn't have these dashboard performance measures you talk about. You know, you give examples, reduce the level of violent crime by five percent, very reasonable kind of thing. And, you know, so I'm kind of shocked at that, as far as I know, we don't, we do get sort of a paper report, I don't know how often, I certainly remember end-of-year reports, and, and it's got zone one, two, three, and so on and so forth, which of course relates to the geography of the town. But I don't know that it's linked up to GIS. I mean, some very basic planning and reporting and accountability tools.
Yes.
That strike me as, really, they're almost like twenty years old now.
Special G.
Do not seem to be in place here. And so then it's not surprising to hear you say in your report, the SOBD PD holds monthly planning meetings. So we do have the planning meetings. These meetings take place at headquarters and moderated, so on and so forth. They're attended by supervisory personnel. No meeting agenda produced, no minutes are taken, and no follow-up or action items are assigned. Quite frankly, I think our police do a fantastic job, and if this is what our level of accountability and performance measures in, we could be doing an even better job. So, you know, I, I thought this was very, very illuminating. I, I welcome the report. I think this is, you know, certainly for me, this is the major finding of the report. I look forward to that. I do want to footnote the fact that the traffic studies that have been done for developments in town, looking at that intersection, as well as our own borough engineer, think that the traffic officer reduces the efficiency of traffic clearance in most movements at that intersection. But it's, it's, you know, mostly, it's very useful at some times, and all the rest of the time, it's a very feel-good measure, it's not going to go away. But I understand your point that you don't need a human being where you actually have a traffic control measure. You should be rethinking your traffic control measure and putting in the proper signage and, you know, lanes and so on and so forth to fix the traffic, because otherwise, what would you need a human being for? On the other hand, we need more traffic safety officers, I think, because there are so, I mean, one of the top complaints that we get as local elected officials on this board is about speeding, the need for traffic calming, all kinds of other things, that I was shocked to see that it was over three thousand enforcement items on the chart there for traffic, because it's our, it's one of our number-one complaint. Before I got here today, it was my number-one complaint on, on my smartphone. And I shot a video this afternoon with the seniors down at the senior center on Bose complaining that they can't get us across the street. So, you know, that's one thing I disagree with. But otherwise, I thought it was a very good report, and I thank you for it.
I have two questions, and I don't know if you can answer them. First question is regarding the ten-hour, forty-minute shift. You said it's odd. Do you have any idea of why we have that?
I have no idea.
Okay. The second question, you may not have any idea about this either, is why do you feel our sick time is so high?
Uh...
Another, I don't, hard to answer?
Well, I mean, I point out in the facility, I mean, the facility is not, I don't want to say it's not healthy, but, you know, it's not a pleasant place to work. I can't imagine that not it being a factor. But I'm, I, I can't tell you specifically why the sick rate is so high, but it is high.
I'd like to add to that. That was one of my questions, my concern is. And it's really disturbing that the sick time is so high. And that goes back to, you know, what can we as a policymaking body and along, supporting the chief can do to examine this? Because there's definitely a real problem. And no, no organization should have that high percentage of sick time. And when they do, there's a real, real systemic problem.
Yes.
And I, I'm very interested and concerned about how we can be a part of, of the solution.
But before you answer, I just want to ask, follow up on the same thing on the sick time. Was it a evenly distributed, or were there frequent flyers?
Both. I think the chief and one officer were the only individuals that did not go sick in the calendar year that I looked at. But there are sick management. And one of the other things that could be a driver of it is, you know, the department has a fixed minimum on patrol. So when somebody goes sick, it's filled with overtime. So I'm not suggesting that that's being abused, but that certainly, you know, doesn't help the situation anymore. And that's also driving the overtime. I mean, you have a fairly high overtime rate. I think it's over, over six, six percent in overtime. I'd like to see it around five percent. So, you know, taking those two things in combination, you know, could be part of the, could be part of the problem. Could also be more aggressive when people do go sick, that it's not just the open-ended, you know, we'll see you when you come back, that there's more of a, you know, link to medical professionals, that you have X number of days before you can see a doctor, you have to appear with a note, or, you know, there's a whole laundry list of things that might be possible.
Are there any other questions or comments from any members of the board?
One other question. Dr. McCabe, so, you know, obviously, this report is, you know, very broad, covers lots of ground. Any particular recommendations on next steps? I mean, obviously, if we were to pick and choose things we wanted to implement, I mean, how do you do that together as a board, together with the police department? You know, what, how does, how do municipalities, you know, act on any or all, any of the recommendations in the report?
Sure. Well, I mean, first couple of things right out of the gate, that, looking at the facility, you know, and I think, working with the union. Because, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the ideas, you know, exist within, you know, the rank and file, like these things, you know, from my perspective, but they could be completely different from, from the officer's perspective. So tapping into that costs you nothing. I mean, you can sit down and figure out, hey, well, you know, triage these, prioritize them, what do you think? How do we start from here? Performance management system, that can be done tomorrow morning. You know, that can start to be, to be researched. You know, some of the bigger ticket items, like the shift rearrangement, I mean, that's something you're going to have to negotiate if ever change, you know, and the shift length may never change. You know, I don't know how long it's been that way, but I would imagine that's a, it's a nice work schedule. And, you know, getting the officers to, to modify that, you know, may never happen. So if you can approve the working conditions in the facility and design the performance system to, you know, drill into that, into that data, I, I think you'd, and then create those organizational modifications that I, I suggested in there, you know, in partnership with the employees and the chief, I, I think that's the appropriate next steps.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay.
I think most of the other questions are probably going to be about us and implementation, any of these things we want to do and how we're going to move forward. I guess that's for another time.
Yeah, I mean, we can have a brief discussion about that, about what folks would like to do moving forward. But it sounds like that concludes all of our discussion, or questions, for you at least. So thank you for that. for you at least. So thank you for that. And I'll defer to our village administrator and village clerk, but it sounded like there was, I guess, a necessity, although we've already distributed the reports in the back, so I'm not sure how that plays into it, as far as accepting the document inasmuch as allowing it to be a publicly distributed document, not a draft document.
Yeah, we'll discuss this, and basically, previously, we had been provided with a draft. It was in draft form, maintained as deliberative and consultative materials, exempt from the Public Records Act. Now having been delivered what is now labeled as the final report, presented in the final form, my recommendation would be that someone on the board make a motion to accept the report as a final report, making this sort of officially makes it a public record, being clear that the acceptance is only as to the final form of the document, that it's not an acceptance or endorsement of any particular recommendation or conclusion, although which is, remains that of ICMA. But I think just to have a clear point of delineation that this is when we've accepted it's now a final public record and no longer deliberative. So I would just recommend that.
All right. I guess I have one, maybe one more question before we do that. You know, some of these items that I was hoping to have a little more discussion on, well, yeah, yeah, for you, actually. You know, some of these items, I mean, you know, it sounds like some of them are really difficult to quantify. You know, again, there was a couple of things that I was, you know, really hoping to see larger discussions of. I mean, do you feel that those are beyond the scope of this report?
Which ones are you referring to? Because I'm agreeable to work with the department and you on an ongoing basis. I mean, I have no problem with that.
Well, you know, so there were, there were a few major ones. One was about Seton Hall. I'm just curious, a little more discussion, I mean, they represent, you know, a significant percentage, my understanding, of the call volume in town, but they're not really given any space as far as what role their security plays in the way calls are handled, how many calls are done, you know, for example, on campus versus how many then get moved up to the police department needing intervention. I'd be a little curious about that and how they, how we also work with off-campus students that live, you know, in areas adjacent to Seton Hall University, and where there's kind of a little bit of, you know, Seton Hall jurisdiction, but obviously, they're within our municipality. You know, I was curious, you know, for a discussion about the impact, about what not, not having officers respond, you know, trying to reduce those calls for service, you know, it seems like, you know, I mean, you kind of said you could either do it or not do it. So there's not, I guess, you know, too much of a recommendation there. But there are just, you know, some of those other items, you know, the fact that our police are, you know, you know, first responders for our medical and fire calls, you know, is an added value. And I was kind of curious about, you know, whether other towns do that, you know, whether they use their police department in that function, the way that we do. My, you know, anecdotal evidence is that, you know, that's somewhat atypical of our police officers performing that wide variety of functions. And I guess at the end of the day, I mean, there's, there's a couple more that were emailed over as part of my comments of the draft, but, you know, that, there's kind of like, you know, one set of recommendations made from the report, whereas kind of in my head, and maybe this is just for me to think about on my own, you know, once we're deliberating the content of this, is that this is, you know, it's not really that there is just one right way to do things, that depending on what our community, the level of service our community expects, and depending on what we're willing to pay for, you know, is going to be how high the service levels are. And, you know, and I think that, you know, our community, what they expect is probably a lot higher than what most towns expect. And I think they get that right now. And so, you know, it was almost more of like a slider in my head of like, well, you could spend less money, but you're going to get less, or you could spend less money, but in some of these recommendations, you could get the same. And, you know, it just, to me, you know, kind of the overall, like, well, there's, here's the recommendation, you know, kind of, I guess, seemed like to me is like, well, we either almost have to take it or leave it, whereas it seems like, at least in my head, there's, you know, more of a range.
I mean, speaking specifically to the call volume, I mean, that's what, you know, is behind the recommendation of a paneling committee, because you could, you could just take everything lock, stock, and barrel and stop going with these things. And my experience is, not a lot is going to change. However, like you said, if you, if you want to provide that service to the public, and the public expects that kind of service, you're well-equipped to provide it. And that's a decision that this body and the chief and the community needs to, needs to engage. And, you know, medical calls around the country, unless there is some type of emergency medical situation, the police do not go. It's just not, it's off their, off their call responsibility. So if you call and say, you know, I fell down the stairs and broke my leg, paramedics go. And if they think there's some kind of domestic violence or foul play, all the police get called and they get summoned afterwards. So all of that is potentially a for reevaluation.
It's the same kind of discussion we've had specifically about the animal control, what calls constitute an emergency. So if somebody has a squirrel in their house, to some people, that's an emergency, to other people...
That's a huge emergency.
That's, well, it's a huge emergency to you, but to Michael, it's another pet in the house. So, you know, it's a whole different, it's a whole different...
To Howie, it's dinner.
So we have, so we have to, we have to decide, you know, and that's why it goes back to my question before.
And to Alex, it's a fur head.
What's the policy decision for the board responding to calls and to alarms? We have to set a policy for it. But I think the overall report, which I think, I, there are parts I would have liked more detail myself, but I think it gives us a good basis, because the real, when we started this, we said, can the police department act to be more efficient? That was the main goal. Can we have a more efficient department? And what I hear loud and clear, besides cleaning up the building and buying better equipment, was that the scheduling right now is not operating at the peak for the police department or for the, or for the residents. And it wasn't about the number of police officers, it was about maximizing, so we had better coverage at better times of the day, maxing the crime things and so forth like that. And so how do we implement that? How do we get to that? And then we start drilling down in the report about other things. We had to do a five-year capital plan, probably. We're not obviously going to spend everything in this, this important one year. So we have to set priorities over five years for that, and I think we can get to that. And we have to decide who we want to help, what's implement, whether it's going to be a former officer, somebody from ICMA, or just do it internally. You know, that's what I see as our next, as our next steps, as you call it.
Well, I think there are some next steps that are outlined by
Yes.
in the report, like in panel, a call for service committee. And what I was trying to get when we had the conversation is what is that composed of? And maybe that's what we need to discuss, is how do we form these committees or groups so that we can move what's in the report forward.
I expect the Public Safety Committee to completely finish all this by the end of next week, though.
So earlier, Mr. Lewis, you know, made a suggestion that as far as finishing this report and accepting that it's finalized, whether there is a trustee who wants to make a motion in that regard, again, state that it's not about endorsing the report, but about, it's, now it's complete, and now we have to discuss, you know, what we're going to do moving forward.
I move to simply accept the report that is presented.
I second that.
Okay, just moved by trustee Davis Ford and seconded by trustee Gohurt. Do we have a roll call, please?
Would you like a roll call, though?
Yeah.
Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Gohurt?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And trustee Rosner?
Yes.
So the report is accepted as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
And again, to be clear, that doesn't mean we're taking everything or anything. It simply means...
The longer the draft, it's now finalized.
Right, and it's public documents.
The motion was just so we could release it to the public.
Is this going to be placed on the website?
It already is.
I believe it is.
Yeah.
It's on the homepage already.
It's on the website now. Yeah, we're going to give a thumbs up. So we need to talk about the way that we're going to move forward in discussing some of these changes. You know, I think the, the idea of a committee of people is probably the right way to go. I don't know if it's best to do it out of the Public Safety Committee that already exists, or create a different work group.
I think because this is so...
Open to suggestions.
This is so specific and focused that, you know, you, we have the ability to do ad hoc committees. I think that it should be a committee formed, and with a sunset, a specific timeframe, and deliverable, you know?
Okay.
That way...
And the other, at the risk of, I think, one, there is so much in here that you could sort of overwhelm any one committee. There are certain aspects of it, particularly some of the IT stuff, the finance and IT committee's already been working on for many, many months. So I think it may be a situation of all sitting down, trying to parse it out, some of it may be more, you know, the building conditions, some totally unique from staffing.
I mean, some of them are public safety related, some are public works related, some are IT related.
So you're suggesting that maybe that's the better way to do it, to look at it and divide the particular components to existing committees?
I think, I think that makes the most sense. We all have enough, you know, a lot of committees as it is.
Oh, okay.
To really take on the whole thing.
Yeah.
But a lot of the stuff is synchronized. You can't just ad hoc, each one of the committees do something independently of each other.
Well, right, committees don't, then they all come back here, and they discuss it as an aggregate.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask if that, if we're going to do it that way, which I don't have any objection to, is the planning and data performance measurement going to reside with public safety?
Some of that's personnel, too. I mean, it could go either way. I don't, I'm not married to either way.
On IT, there's, you know, an infrastructure that needs to be put in place for that as well.
I think she's talking about more the performance management.
No, I understand.
Well, they go hand in hand. I see what you're saying.
I mean, it's, I think there are a lot of interdisciplinary issues that are in here. You know, my, honestly, my reaction would be to have one group of people go through this. I mean, that group would include representatives from those committees, as well as the police department and the unions as well.
And I, yeah, I think that it is important to have a, a group which would include police, the department, you know, I mean, against, from purely our level, some of these buildings, some of those expenses involved can all be kind of parceled out, but then there has to be one clear group which would, I think...
When you're saying, when you're saying one group, though, I wanted to, please define what you mean with one group. Are you just talking trustees? Are you talking trustees, civilians, police officers?
Uh, well, I don't know about civilians. I'm certainly, I'm envisioning that there should be sort of one group formed, which I would expect would be the minimum myself, likely the village president, a number of trustees, so that it's to not violate the Public Meetings Act, and representatives of the department who likely would be senior officers in whatever key personnel the chief deets appropriate.
Okay.
And that, and try and get a, you know, real collaborative process going.
Yeah, okay. That, I'd be fine with that.
Sorry, say that again?
Three, three, two or three trustees, you and Barry.
With the, with representatives from the police.
Of course, the police.
Yeah, I would, I would like to, yeah, make sure. And can we, can we define all the members right now, so that there's no kind of confusion going forward? At least the positions? I mean, so when we say the police department, I mean, the chief?
Yes.
Well, I would want to consult with the chief and let him give some input as to what he thinks the key personnel are, if he would like to be involved in the report.
The chief may delegate someone.
So do you want, I mean, you know, we, we had this committee that looked at choosing which company did this study, and that, you know, we tried to create, I think what we're trying to create now, which is representative stakeholders from the board, from the administration, from the police department, from the unions, and residents that were involved in, you know, public safety capacities. Maybe we can take the conversation offline and contact, you know, people individually and see what their interest is. But I would be interested in having, you know, that kind of, I think, wider group, you know, to discuss some of these things.
Yeah, no, and I, fortunately, we have a meeting Monday night, so I think, yeah, I don't want a lot of grass to grow, so I don't, but I think, yeah, give that some thought, and certainly, I wasn't here as part of that process, but look at who's in that group, and then maybe Monday night, make some definitive decision.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions about this?
Do you want to take any questions, or?
Uh, yeah, we can, we can take comments or questions from members of the public.
I think, I think a couple of people signed up.
Yeah, I don't know, did we have a signing sheet back there?
And I guess the question is, I imagine many of the questions may be for Dr. McCabe, but rather than us, right? I assume we can allow him to respond if they have specific questions for him?
Yeah, we, we can do that, although I do want to discourage people from getting into a back-and-forth conversation. But if people do have a question and there's an answer, you can certainly allow that, if you keep the whole thing for each person under four minutes.
And, and Dr. McCabe, if you do get a question, you'll need to use the microphone, otherwise people can't hear you.
You can see it, I see it better.
Keep telling you we're getting out of here.
Yeah.
So there are, there are some sign-ups on here. The first is Adrian Acevedo.
Here you go.
Okay.
Hi, Tom Kelly. I live in town. I apologize to my fellow citizens. I have thirty-five teachers at my house, and when I left, they were discussing student evaluations, and God knows what's going on there now. We might need all of the South Orange police to get back there, including Dr. McCabe by now, so they were kind enough to let me jump in and get out. I have the, I guess, not good fortune to be in the two percent that Dr. McCabe talked about. I wish I was in Mitt Romney's two percent, but I'm in the Dr. McCabe's two percent, and that is the two percent that he said are real calls in South Orange, as opposed to the ninety-eight percent not real calls. And it happened several times. I don't know what it is about my neighborhood, but the South Orange PD got there quick, responsive, and did what had to be done to stop small problems from becoming big problems. And for that, I'm eternally grateful for them, so you know where I'm coming from. That's just me. Any study, any expert study depends on the methodology of the study. I think Dr. McCabe even said that. We pride ourselves on being unique in South Orange. From a personal level, that's a good thing. From a scientific level, it's very interesting. I mean, I don't know how many studies have been done for this kind of stuff about a town that's a small suburban town, living next to huge urban towns with a college next door. Seems to me that without being able to match other towns like ours, there's, it's hard to validate any kind of study that you do examining South Orange. As trustee Rosner said, just a couple of points that Dr. McCabe made. There was an issue about the SOPD responding to too many accidents. I mean, I don't know how you know if you should respond or shouldn't respond until you get there. I mean, if two guys are punching each other out, is it, for a small accident, I mean, until you get there, you just don't know. Charts are all very nice, but again, our town is very unique. There were some things in there about the summer. I mean, we have this flash mob problem, which we needed to staff unbelievably. I don't know how that gets accounted for in the studies. And I, again, it portends to how unique our town is. So I think I asked trustees to look at this study with a jaundiced eye, because I don't know that anyplace else matches what we have here. And in my case, when I needed the help, this was a few years ago, and we already, I think, had a couple more officers than we do now. So any study that says we should cut down on officers troubles me as a, as a resident of the town. Also, on methodology, as I think trustee Rosner again said, I don't understand how you can't talk to the trustees, and by the way, not talk to the citizens, or not talk to business members of the town. So I have a lot of problems with the study itself. I haven't reviewed it yet. I'm sure I'll have a lot more questions when I do, but from listening here tonight, those are some of the concerns I had. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Adrian Acevedo, I'm the president of the, the union here. I don't have any questions. I'm not asking for a response. I'm just going to put out, I'm just going to address the board and the public here. The substance of the report itself is not really too important to me right now. I think anyone who has some town knowledge and some common sense even know what to make of it when they look at it. But my issue is with the manner in which the business was conducted, which resulted in a severely flawed report. To go back quickly from the beginning, I was opposed, not because I don't welcome some fair and balanced evaluation, but because it was, it was a little disheartening, and it was, it was peculiar to have to go out to a company and pay them this exorbitant amount of money to do this study when no effort had really been prior, taken, as far as, let's sit down, let's hash it out. What can we do? How can we get more efficient? How can we be more productive? How, what did we do so far? What can we do to trim budgets? None of that, none of that really took place. At least, nothing that warranted going out to some outside company. So again, it was disheartening when we have a chief of police who grew up here, who put in almost thirty years of service to this town, worked his way up through the ranks, yet no one thought of him and said, hey, let's sit down and let's do that. But instead, what we did, we went to a company and said, we're going to give you fifty thousand dollars to come in and tell us how, how to better police, right? And let me put it in perspective, a starting patrolman makes somewhere around twenty-seven thousand dollars, right? So for fifty thousand dollars, we had a company come in and tell us that they were going to bring in a team to gather this, this large amount of data. They were going to come in and spend time with police personnel to, to get some on-the-ground police insight, the guys and girls who work here, day in and day out. They were going to have meetings with the public to see how the public feels, or, you know, maybe what they want, or how they think we're doing. They spent maybe a total of eight hours with us and the police department, okay? They came in and they ordered police personnel to, to compile this data and hand it over to them, so they could put it into a cut-and-paste form, which they charged us fifty thousand dollars for. The meetings with the public never happened. We were kept out of the loop. In fact, the chief only got this report forty-eight hours ago, okay? In this fifty thousand dollar report, lots of things make sense. Some recommendations make sense, some things are factual. All things that we have already articulated to the board, or to the town, things that we already do, or already have, in the report. One of the things the report got right is that we do a great job fighting crime. We do that well, we would take pride in that, we're gonna continue to do that, for the sake of the citizens, for ourselves, but you gotta understand that jobs aren't getting easier, you know, things are, crimes are getting more violent, the towns around us are encroaching on us every single day. To hear some of the things in this report is, to me, is just bizarre, and, and I, and I hope that the, the public feels the same way. I don't think the public wants such, some of the things in this report. It's unfortunate you guys already accepted this report, I was gonna ask, is that, you know, I believe this thing was a mistake to go out to ICMA, I was gonna ask for the board to not accept this report, to apologize for the people spending fifty grand, and to come to us and then sit down and, and do what we should have done from the beginning, sit down, what can we do from the folks who actually know what's going on in town?
Thank you.
Steve Davenport, resident of South Orange.
Just make sure you're in the microphone.
Can you hear me? Steve Davenport, resident of South Orange, police detective, and also the vice president of the PBA. Mr. McCabe, I have a couple of questions to ask you. Would you say it was fair to say that if you changed the weeks during your analysis, it could change dramatically the percentage of workload for the officers?
I wouldn't say dramatically, but yeah, of course, if you changed the weeks, the, the numbers would change.
Well, during the months of like, say, September, when Seton Hall is in session, would you say the workload would increase when the kids are out, when they first get to school?
Obviously.
Okay. What made you pick the weeks that you did?
Well, we picked the months, we picked February and August. So, I would submit that when the kids come back to school in September, the same phenomenon, if you will, occurs in February. So, we had representative months, and we tried to get a balance of slow months, busy months, weekends, weekdays, just for comparison.
Would you consider doing an analysis of the entire year?
Well, we take twelve months worth of data to, to do, to do those categorizations, to break it down like that, but to take the workload and compare it to the, to the staffing, we do it in the, in the, in the two representative months. And I would submit that if you did it for the entire year, that you would find a similar pattern, with variations that you noted.
I'm gonna disagree, I'm gonna believe it's gonna be much higher, but can you tell me why community relations and traffic bureau and detectives are not included in your report for, according to the, the report, it says workload analysis, community relations, traffic personnel, or non-patrol units are not included in the report?
Could you say that again?
It says, community relations, traffic bureau personnel, and it also does not mention detectives, are considered non-patrol units and are not included in your report.
Well, part of that is not an accurate statement, because we do include the traffic bureau people in the...
If you wanna read your report, I'll show you the page, it specifically says.
I understand, I'm not gonna, I'm just clarifying it.
Okay.
The detective, when we looked at those, those graphs, the workload graphs, the detectives and the community, I forget the nomenclature, but the community relations people were not included in that, but the traffic bureau people were, and that accounts for the different color green in the graph that I put up.
And what would be the purpose of non, like Sergeant D'Esso, he's normally doing community relations, but as a police officer, if there's a problem, he responds, just like a detective. If there's an emergency, we respond out there, and we take regular patrol calls.
Right, well, we try to isolate the people that have the primary responsibility for doing that. So, your primary responsibility is not answering patrol calls, therefore you were omitted from the calls of service.
Versus workload calculation.
My primary responsibility is fighting crime. You mentioned in here that all information in the report, and it's in the report, was developed directly from data records from dispatch, the CAD system, correct?
Yes.
Solely obtained from dispatch?
Well, the information that generates those graphs, yeah.
Then you say in your report that the CAD system is twelve years old and is flawed, and the data was flawed to begin with.
Uh, I didn't say the data was flawed, I said the system is old and needs upgrading. The information that we get out of it is, was appropriate for analysis. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have analyzed the data if we thought it was corrupt or inappropriate.
But how do you obtain data when the board is now looking at a new CAD system, so they can get additional information, new data?
Well, let me answer that by way of analogy. If you have an old computer, the information on there is still extractable and analyzable, however, the computer may need to be updated, doesn't change the information that's housed on the computer.
Was there any data that you could not use?
Well, there's, there's a triage system that goes, when, when the analysis is, when the data is taken out, there are calls that are zero, zero time responded to, there are calls that are dropped, there are calls that are incomplete. So, yeah, there are calls that are taken away, so we can have complete records, so we can analyze.
And probably the last question is, can you tell me how many items were within this report that was omitted or added after you finished your initial report in July?
Omitted or added? I'm not sure I understand what you're talking about.
Was there anything added or taken out of the initial report? Your report was finished in July.
Right.
It took another five months before this report was completed.
Right.
Obviously, there was things added or taken away.
Sure, well, the board had an opportunity, I mean, the president himself, you know, he, he mentioned things that he commented on, and had one of the clarifications of. So, yeah, there were, there were comments, there were items that were raised for us to address, and to the extent that they needed to be addressed, we did.
Was there anything in the initial report that was removed from the report?
Well, it's hard for me to answer that, but let me just say that there was nothing put in, changed, added, deleted, that alters the substance of the recommendations. So, I, I'm not sure what you're driving at, but the, the content of the report is the same as it was in July when it was created, as it is now. There are some things that may have been changed, some things we didn't get right, some things that were needed to be, you know, adjusted to make better sense, but I think the substantive issues are the same.
Would we, the PBA or the public, be able to see both copies, so we can bear ourselves?
I don't know if we can necessarily release the first copy, we'd have to ask our counsel, who's not here tonight. You know, what perhaps we may be able to do is release the recommendation, or the comments that we made back, and we can certainly ask counsel if, what, what's available to be released.
Do I need to request it again, 'cause I requested three times so far?
Well, when you requested it previously, it wasn't a public document, until that motion was just made just now, under the Open Public Records Act, draft documents that are provided by consultants are not public documents, so filing an open request wouldn't get you that document, that's correct, but now, now it is a public document, that's what that motion was for, and what we can do is go back and ask counsel whether, you know, what, what parts of that, you know, could be released. You know, that's really not up to us to decide, it's really for the attorneys. But we can definitely do that, you don't have to file a request, we'll follow up on that.
Okay, and just a couple of quick ones. Under New Jersey state law, I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but any motor vehicle accident with a five hundred dollar damage is reportable?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty much any motor vehicle accident involving two cars is reportable, so I, I don't know how you would determine what calls you wouldn't respond to. How, I mean, would, is there an answer?
Is there, I'm not sure I...
Well, how would you, how would you not respond to a call when by New Jersey law states that a police officer must take a police report for a motor vehicle accident?
Well, I'm not familiar with all, all the laws of the states, so forgive me if I don't know New Jersey law, but my understanding would be that if an accident needs to be reported, is it the police that have to report it, or is it have to be reported?
It's a police report.
It's a police report, right.
It has to be a police report.
Right, so the obligation is for the motorists to prepare that report, they can go to the police station and fill it out, as opposed to having the, the officer be, have to respond to the scene of the accident.
And my last question is, do you feel by the lack of manpower in our department, it's causing our schedule to fail? Because originally, when we had a, the proper amount of police officers to fill the schedule, the form for schedule, we didn't have the overtime, we didn't have all the other things related to it. And it's almost, by not hiring police officers, we're causing the schedule to fail, and we're, it's never gonna work.
Is there a question in there for me? I'm not sure I...
Do you think...
Well, I think you, I think, as I said, I think your schedule is inefficient, I think your work rules are counterproductive. I think that, you know, that the town needs to sit down with the union, and, you know, if you're agreeable, to renegotiate a proper schedule that reflects the demand in the community, and is better use of your time, that the one you have now just is inefficient and is costing the town a lot of money.
But is it inefficient because it doesn't have enough men?
It fails because you created it to fail, that's why it fails.
Excuse me?
I said it fails because you've created it to fail, that it needs to be restructured so it can be more successful.
But it's only failing because we don't have enough men to cover those positions?
Well, if you would agree to change it, you could probably alter it, so you would have enough officers, men and women, to have the demand reflected by the supply.
It's possible?
Yeah, that was my recommendation, that's what I said.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Janine Buckner. Good evening, Dr. McCabe, thank you for presenting and to the board, and I am a resident in town, I live at one-five-seven Fairview Ave, I'm also the coordinator for the village's neighborhood watch organization, which is a partnership with SOPD, so I was disheartened to not be included in part of the... Can you speak up a little louder? Sure, I was, I was saying who I was, and as a representative of the neighborhood watch organization, I was disheartened to not be included in the process, which I believed the public was going to be engaged in. Many of my questions were already asked, particularly by Alex Torpey, but as a, I, I teach in town too, at the university, as a scientist, and to use academic speak, I didn't have the privilege to look at the data and the charts and whatnot, but my question has to do with the data. We're, you know, we're eyeballing numbers as opposed to use a data analysis. So, could you address how you, you know, when you make statements like better versus worse, or more, or less, you know, what kinds of statistical analyses were conducted, and, you know, for statistical significance and those kinds of things?
Sure, well, we didn't do any inferential analysis, this is just descriptive, it's just taken out of the CAD system, it's simple Excel spreadsheets and plotted, and then overlaid with the manpower, you know, personnel staffing with the raw calculations. So, there was no inferential, there was no significance to be found, and, you know...
Okay, okay, so, talking about like the sixty percent, the saturation level, and whether or not we were statistically significant from that saturation levels or not, that wasn't assessed.
Well, no, because there was no inferential analysis done, so I can't tell you if it was significant, but just eyeballing it, just, yeah.
So, just look. Right, okay, okay. I had a question, I think this was asked already, but regarding your statement about there being a surplus of officers driving around, I just want to echo the point that many of our residents ask this question, how much crime is prevented by officers being seen in our community? And it's, it's an incredibly important point to many people, and, you know, between the youths and non-youths walking around and whatnot, many populations see those things, both residents and non-residents.
I, I, I don't have any, I, you can't, I can't quantify that, I mean, that was the same question that the president asked, and I, I don't have an answer for you, can't quantify the negative.
Right, 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 that's right, but perhaps there's a way that we could speculate about how...
But again, I'd just like to point out, you know, even with the analysis that was done, you know, the, the minimum manings that exist now, we believe, I believe, are appropriate, regardless of what the, the data suggests. You know, I'm not, I'm not here to suggest that you only need one officer on, you know, on duty in the town, so...
Right, right, no, point, point taken. And then I had one other question. Okay, all right, so it was, for the sake of the public, what, what I'm referring to is that when we're collecting data and we're quantifying the data, that's not necessarily an, an analysis, but a, a description of the data, so just want to encourage you to consider those things when we're thinking about the numbers.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Right, 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 thank you, okay.
Good evening, I'm Ernesto Murillo, I'm an officer here in the South Orange Police Department, I've been employed here for just under eight years, prior to that, I worked for nine years at County Jail in Essex County, giving me up close to seventeen years of experience in law enforcement. Prior to my appointment here, I was a resident in town for about seventeen years. And just a couple of things that I just wanted to respond to as far as the trustees, more than anything, from the doctor here. And just a couple of things that you need to keep in mind, I noticed, we were talking about things being pointed out as far as with the, the traffic enforcement officer, even on the board, you have different perspectives, based on who sees what at what time, and, and that's very, very important. I know, Dr., you did say that you're from New York, and wherever there is a human being, it's really not a good reason to have, rather, wherever there is a traffic control device, why have a human being? Prior to living in South Orange, I grew up in New York City, and I don't know if any of you have ever been to New York City, especially during rush hour, but all you see is traffic officers directing traffic where there are traffic control devices. So, it's, it's a matter of necessity, even though there are traffic control devices, people don't always seem to follow them the way they're designed to function, and that is why we have a traffic control officer in the center of town, because we know that without that individual there during rush hour, in particular, we would have massive backup after the town, the, the main thoroughfare, which is South Orange Avenue, was narrowed down to one lane. So, it's a massive bottleneck over there. So, even in New York City, there are tons of traffic control officers everywhere, especially near the tunnel, near the bridges, where all these traffic control devices are. So, yeah, the redundancy is, there is, even in New York, there's about twenty-six hundred traffic control officers in New York City to assist the thirty-five thousand plus police officers that are on duty there. As far as the universities are concerned, or are universities concerned, and you mentioned that, you know, we, we work well with the university, and there's, at one point, you actually said there's an abundance of police officers that help, that are available as a resource to work well with the university, and keep in mind, the, the universities that are within twenty-five miles of, of, of South Orange, which would be Rutgers, NJIT, Essex County College, Keene University, Montclair State University, Stevens Institute of Technology, UMDNJ, all have their own police department, in addition to their public safety department. Seino University does not, but has about as much, but not more, in our population, resident population, not to mention transit as far as your commuters, than all of those universities that I mentioned. So, it is a significant number of people that come into the town from as early as an eight o'clock class to as late as an eight in the evening class throughout the nine months or so of the school year. So, there's a significant population increase, and they don't have a police department, so we work well with, with, with the university as far as we respond to everything that they need, because public safety basically gives us a call wherever they don't dial nine-one-one, and then we respond, and they step aside. So, that's what happens as, as far as the university is, is concerned. Another thing I wanted to mention, trustee Davis Ford, I heard you say that there was a systemic problem as far as sick time, and I just wanted to ask, over what timeframe was this report, or this analysis conducted?
Just one year, just 2011.
Two thousand and eleven. I don't know if you're aware, but since two thousand and eleven, we've lost about four police officers in, due to retirement, or that have resigned or gone to other police departments. And in addition to that, we've also had significant injuries, long-term injuries, things like broken hips, and things like that, which are long-term recovery periods that have been sustained while on duty. Police work is not like an accountant, or, or, or a teacher, or, it is extraordinary as far as the amount of physical commitment that, that is necessary on our part, day in and day out, and, and when you mentioned that there's a systemic problem as far as our sick time, we've been working at a minimal, there are two numbers that we work off of, which is the staffing number, and then there's the minimum staffing number, and we've been at the minimum staffing number, like the doctor mentioned. When you reach that minimum staffing number, if a person is sick, you have no room, no wiggle room, you have to hire overtime... You have to hire overtime because you're at the minimum to begin with. This was conducted over the last year, which we've been operating at our minimum for a little over two years now. Uh, when our new schedule comes out to be, uh, enacted at the beginning of the year, our squads are short and they've been that way for the last couple of years. So it's already set up where if one person is out sick, you're required to hire overtime. So systemic, the, the problem that I see systemic is that issues like the president has, uh, mentioned as far as sitting down and trying to figure out what it is, uh, that's going on right here without having to bring in, bring in a, a third party, uh, it just hasn't happened. So a, a lot of the questions that, that this gentleman, uh, has suggested or his answers that he has suggested to you, they've been right in front of your face all along. So that's something that you, that you have to look at and wonder why it is that you haven't been able to answer these questions yourself. I've seen, uh, trustee Goldberg on, on Sloan Street many a times, uh, trying to ascertain what's going on when there's three, 400 kids in, in, in that small one-block radius and how three, four officers are trying to, uh, maintain order there. And, and as far as none, uh, we have, the question that the president was asking as far as addressing the fact that you have the, the non-productive time where you're not committed to anything. When, when we're in, in the middle of that town and, and there's two, 300 kids and there's, uh, your in-and-out traffic from that, from that midtown direct that, that's right in the middle of the town and South Orange Avenue, which connects, uh, three counties, we're like scarecrows almost in that. We're, we're, we're keeping things from landing in the town and disrupting, to, to use an analogy of what would be the harvest, you know? And you, you're not ever gonna realize how much of your harvest you're gonna lose until you start removing your scarecrows. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time?
Just real quick, uh, yeah, so I'm actually in community relations, I spoke with you. Uh, did you gather any data? I know you mentioned cutting some positions, a rank and a captain. Did you gather any data on exactly what the lieutenant does? I didn't see that mentioned. As far as paperwork, uh, dealing with prisoners, and I know you said you're not from New Jersey, did you look into liability? If a prisoner hurt himself, would the town be liable? No officer in the building? Did you gather any data on that?
I'm not sure what, what kind of data you would, would suggest.
Well, when, when you talk about eliminating positions, did you, I didn't hear you give any statistics about what they actually do. Did you gather any?
Oh, sure, I mean, I, I, we, I sat with the lieutenants, uh, the desk officers, you know, I, I had a pretty good handle. I've been a desk officer in New York, so I, you know, I, I have not only the information that I need, I, you know, I have a, an experience in that, so I, I'm fully aware of what their position is. Uh, I think in the report, when you get a chance to read it, you see that we think you should be out of the prisoner business, that you should not take them, custody of them at all, that there needs to be another alternative to leaving, leaving them in the, in the cells, you know? Uh, I mean, I don't know what that answer is.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't mean to be disrespectful, we're the police.
Yeah.
Right, what do you mean be out of the prisoner business? That's what we do.
Yeah, in other words, you don't bring them to your facility, you bring them to the, the courthouse direct or have someone else take custody of them.
And again, that, that's manpower allowing that to happen.
Okay.
So I'm not so sure we have that manpower if you continually, continually deport the police. The only point I made, thank you.
Don't you allow the police chief? I'd just like to say I'm glad this process is over. Uh, it's been a long time coming, actually too long, I'd say, to be very honest with you. Um, I think this probably could've been accomplished, I just wanna, uh, you know, thank Barry Lewis, I think, who sped this along. Uh, this, this was a study that quite honestly, I think if we had all sat down a long time ago when we decided to do this, we probably could've done this without, uh, bringing in Dr. McCabe, no disrespect to him, and I think we probably could've done that if we had just sat down with the unions, myself and somebody elected official and done this. But getting away, there's no reason for me to look, I read the study, I wish I had seen it prior to 48 hours beforehand. It started out this was gonna be a collaborative effort between everybody and got away from that. That was unfortunate and, uh, for whatever reason, that's what that became. If I had had some part of a part in this, I think it would've made this whole process a lot more smoother, not cause tension with the police department, which it actually did. That was very unfortunate, I think hopefully we can get back on the right track after that. There's no benefit to me to go line by line, go over everything. Does anybody know good, there's some things in that I agree with, he's got some good points, there's other things that I disagree with that are incorrect and obviously he's a colleague of mine, so I'm not gonna discredit him, but there's things that are wrong in it and we can talk about it later. One thing I wanna say, on page 16, it says here, excuse me, it appears that on three sides, South Orange is flanked by communities with very high rates of crime. Of the communities listed, only Maplewood has a lower crime rate than South Orange. Newark, Orange and Irvington has substantially greater crime rates than South Orange, in some cases more than double or triple the state average. In totality, it can be concluded that South Orange enjoys a relatively low crime rate and the department does a commendable job managing crime in the community. Uh, I think I'll just leave it at that, that's all. I think the guys do an outstanding job, but there's some issues that we can address. Certainly there's some ways that we can better ourselves, technology that way, I think that's one thing that we can definitely do. I think we should work together going forwards as partners, not more or less separate, and I think everybody can benefit from it. So I wish everybody a good night and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanna say... Is there anybody else who wishes to...
I just wanna confirm, I just wanna confirm one thing that we got the report...
Hold on, trustee Rosner, hold on. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time?
He said he was last.
Okay, now he's...
He said he was last, right. Um, I just wanna confirm that we also got the report 48 hours ago, I think we got it Monday night, email, I couldn't print it to Tuesday morning because I have work. So it was basically the same, same time we got it, it was distributed to the police chief as far as I know. So I, I'm unable to think that we had this report weeks before based on that comment. I think everyone else, everybody got it the same time we did.
And just for, again, for anyone watching or anyone in the audience, the report has been posted to the village website, so for those of you who have not gotten a copy here, it is on the village website on the homepage at southorange.org for anyone who wants to look at it. Um, so in, in closing, you know, I think it's, um, I think it's fair to say, uh, and to speak on behalf of, uh, the board that there's a lot of appreciation, and I know personally for what our police department does, and I think some of that is, um, you know, is discussed and mentioned, um, in the report. Um, and without commenting on, um, you know, the necessity or not of the report itself, um, I think we're all glad that we have it now and that we can now talk about working together. Um, and I think there are some things, areas of improvement in the police department that we've all talked about, um, some of which may or may not have been known ahead of time but are definitely things that we all wanna talk about improving. And I think there are some things that we need to improve, um, from the board level as well, um, you know, including how we manage the facilities and things of that nature. Um, so I think that, uh, you know, a lot of people have talked about the uniqueness of South Orange, um, you know, I believe pretty strongly in that and I feel like that with, um, the information that we have, um, whether it was the best way to get it or whether it was not the best way to get it, at this point, doesn't really matter, we do have it, um, and, you know, we can move forward from there. And I think that at the end of the day, um, that appreciation of, um, you know, that reason why that crime rate in South Orange is lower than some of those towns around us is because of the South Orange Police Department. And I don't think any community members have any doubt about that. Um, and, uh, you know, that's certainly worth keeping in mind. So we're gonna talk about, um, how to follow up with this and put a group together that involves stakeholders to, um, you know, from the administration, from the trustees, from the police department, et cetera, to talk about, um, you know, what changes we can make to build upon what I think is a pretty long history of, um, great policing in this town. Um, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
So, anyone in favor?
Aye.
(knock)